Good evening.
Let's try to get, "Good evening."
Good evening.
Amen. I'm the Reverend Dr. Dennis Blackwell, and I'm a lead pastor here at Asbury Community Church. And we are delighted that you've taken time out of your busy schedules to come and to listen and to learn and to raise any kind of questions that you need to raise. So I'm going to ask you to do one or two things. Can you make sure that your phones are either silent or muted or turned off? There's nothing worse than to be preaching and somebody's phone goes off. That was a joke. Come on, folks, you didn't work too hard in the summertime. Right?
I can't stop.
That's right. Okay, alright. And let me also acknowledge the presence of Pastor Cooper from the Word of Life Church. He's in the back there. He's across the street. Why don't you give him a hand clap? So thank you so much again for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and to be a part of this town hall meeting. I just want you to know that you're always welcome here at Asbury Community Church. And we all recognize that constitutionally, the Constitution gives us the right of freedom of religion and speech and press. And it also gives us the right to protest. Can somebody say protest?
Protest.
Can somebody say protest?
Protest.
That's right. It gives us the right to add our voices of dissent. And we're going to invite you to do it today if they ask some questions or something you disagree with, to raise your voice of dissent. That's how we grow. That's how we develop. That's how we move forward. And that's how justice prevails. We're just going to ask that as you are, if you are as passionate as I am, and in the midst of your passion, if you be mindful that you're in the house of the Lord, amen?
Amen.
You're in the house of the Lord. And secondarily, I want to encourage everybody in this place to make sure that you are registered to vote. Somebody say, "Registered to vote." You, registered to vote, you and Dolly and Lolly and everybody, right? This election, every vote is going to count. And this is literally a fight for our democracy.
We need to vote for.
That's right. That's right. You said, "Vote for Jesus," because in the end, that's all that we have. I actually was going to run, but I wanted to come to Harrison opportunity to raise a sign. So maybe in the next four years, I'll go on doing. Alright, and so I just wanted to kind of segue here and turn this over to Free Holdup McDonald. And once again, thanking you. You're always welcome here. We're here every Sunday morning at 10 o'clock. And it is an awesome experience, if I can say so myself. Amen? Let's give him a hand clap as he comes.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate us allowing us to have our town hall in your church. We appreciate everyone who has come out tonight. We'll keep this as simple as we can. I know that there are lots of questions, so I'll keep my part simple. I just wanted to kind of summarize where we are and what the current situation is. So we need to talk about a problem tonight that has been really quite vexing for the council here in Woodland and for the residents for some time. Put simply, the problem is that council has been having a very hard time trying to hire police officers for the Woodland Police Department. Obviously, I think a lot of you are aware of that. And obviously, this is a very serious problem for public safety for all of the residents. Council's been working very hard to solve this problem. In fact, council interacted with the Camden County Prosecutor's Office for over 18 months, trying to get help and finding ways that the prosecutor could help with brainstorming so that we could find, so that the council and the prosecutor could find ways that we might be able to hire more police officers. We might be able to build a police leadership team. And that we might be able to build a vital and viable Woodland Police Department. They spent 18 months on that, and unfortunately, those conversations were not successful. So council, again, was at a loss. So after these 18 months, sometime after that, council folks came to meet with our Commissioner Director in Camden County, who is Lou Capelli, who is unfortunately not able to be here tonight. So they sat down with Commissioner Capelli and with our Deputy County Administrator Holly Cass and with other people, trying to figure out, what can we do? And those conversations went on for some time. And one of the solutions that was drawn was that it would be an opportunity to add to the jurisdiction of the Camden County Police Department, the Woodland Police Department. Thus, we would have the Camden County Police Department, Woodland Division. Now, needless to say, that's not easy to do. There's a lot of resolutions. Council has already passed one of them. And there's a lot of conversations that have to go on. So anyway, because we knew there would be a lot of questions, that's why we scheduled the town hall. We have folks here who are going to be Chief Rodriguez particularly, who is a great chief of the Camden County Police Department, someone who is not a stranger to many of you. He is actually a hero in Camden City because of all that his department has done to enrich the quality of life for the residents of Camden City. So the chief is here to answer questions. We also have, of course, the government side of operations for the Camden County Police Department. And our Deputy County Administrator Holly Cass plays a vital role in that. So although she's not speaking tonight, she'll be here too to answer any questions that you might have with respect to that. So I've had the honor of working with Chief Rodriguez now for as long as he's been chief and before that. And I think all of you who know him know he is about as fine a person as you could meet and cares more about the people in the city of Camden than just about anyone I know. So it's my great honor to introduce Chief Rodriguez.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. And thank you for being here. It means a lot to come here and see such a nice group. It means your community cares. So that's a good first sign for me as a chief to know you're going to care as much as I do. So thank you for being here. I don't know where the pastor went, because I asked for prayer, and I know you're a prayer pastor. Can you come back up here and give a little prayer for us to start this off right?
That's a prayer. God, we thank you for who you are and all that you do. And we thank you for the opportunity and privilege to be here. And thank you for all the proceedings and the leadership of the academy. And we pray you might give them wisdom and give them courage and strength to be vulnerable and transparent and honest. And those of us who come to ask questions, why we do so with wisdom and strength, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Now we can be, right? I want to keep my comments short now, because I really want to hear from you all and take your questions. I don't know if the council is going to speak. The council president is going to say any words? No, I wasn't sure what the agenda was. I don't have the cheat sheet in front of me to see if there are going to be other speakers before we go into Q and A. But I really just want to give you as much time as possible. There you go, Pastor. God forgive you. I have to give you. Okay. So should we slip down to... So I do want to introduce your council president to come up and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. And I thank everyone for coming out this evening. This has been a long, hard battle for us to try and ensure the safety of all the residents in Camden, figure out financially the best way to do that, as well as man coverage to keep everyone safe. What it finally came down to with discussions with Mr. Capelli, with the Sharps Department, with a lot of folks within Metro, and this seemed to be the best solution for us. It's affordable. It's a safety. And it's also going to give us great coverage. And it's going to enhance what we already have in Camden. There's going to be a lot of different ways that they're going to be able to handle things that our police department could not handle, and it would be no way for us to financially handle. There'll be a much better coverage. There'll be a lot more things for the kids to do because Metro gets involved with the children and sponsors a lot of programs, which will benefit all of our children and benefit the schools. So we can, you know, get together and, you know, coordinate better things to have, keep kids safe and off the streets. Being on the Municipal Alliance, I've already got a good backing with the officers over there that actually run things with the children, so we can continue on that path and not have to worry as much now. And also, just, you know, overall, I think this is the wisest decision that we can make for everyone's safety and for the sake of our kids growing up in the town to be safe. So thank you, everyone, for coming out. And we do appreciate it, and we'll be very glad to answer every question that we can possibly answer within reason this evening. So thank you.
I think they're going to be passing the mic around so you can ask your questions and we'll answer as best as we possibly can. I know we have other council members in the room, county council. I have a bunch of my staff here as well. I try to have representatives from every different division in the police department. Here's I have folks from investigations, from eternal affairs, our community outreach, our recruitment unit, our operations. We have two deputy chiefs here, administrative deputy chief. All of them really just introduced themselves to you, and then you can have some one-on-one with them as well, and then take their brain on certain things that we do and how we operate and what we plan on bringing to you here in Woodland. You need this mic as well?
How much is Camden County going to be charging us for this service, and how does that compare to the police budget Woodland already had?
That's a really good question. It's always about the money first. I know your current budget... I know the current budget in Woodland is somewhere in the 700,000 to 750,000 dollar range. And that's operating with six officers, three that are part-time. I think a lot of that money is being eaten up by overtime. Your department, looking at the last, I guess, work chart that we can find, your department says they have a chief, a public safety director, a lieutenant, a detective, these two officers per shift, I think five SLEO twos and four SLEO ones. So you're down more than half of your agency right now with one, a good friend of mine is the acting sergeant, Louis Ruiz, who's going to be retiring in the first of the month. So of course, there's going to be an increase. For the first month, we're just supplementing the patrol. So whatever Woodland currently has, if you have one officer, we're going to add an officer and a sergeant to that shift. So for the month of September, it's going to cost right around the $100,000 range for us to supplement officers, vehicles, bring outreach to a bunch of different things to introduce ourselves in the community. For the annual budget, right now, we're looking around that million-dollar mark for the year. And again, you're getting everything that my agency has to offer and more. If your police department was fully staffed, that's around the number would be, if not a little bit higher, to be honest with you, if you had all those positions filled. So we're not looking to charge extra for our services. We're trying to keep it right about there. We do have an assemblyman that's going to be here momentarily to talk about other sources that we've been reaching out to the state and other folks to help with some grants, because there are grant opportunities with shared services that can help cut those costs. So I'm being hopeful, and if we do get those grants, it'll still be about $700,000, which you currently have for an annual budget. So I think this gentleman behind you.
What kind of package do we have offered through Collinswood? Because Collinswood, when it came in, they just don't get along with the current administration. And Collinswood had to sue this administration because they had problems with them. So we prefer Collinswood in here and not Camden. And I work with the prosecutor's office. I work with the detectives, FBI. And I see a lot of things going on in Camden that's trickling in Woodland that shouldn't be. And I'm going to be dead honest with you, a lot of the crimes taking over Woodland because it's, they're so, they've been so understaffed for decades. For 20 years, that's why I've been told, they want to run Woodland because there's no cops. My family used to patrol through Collinswood, through Woodland. And they had a great law enforcement service. They protected and served our community. We would prefer to have Collinswood in here. And I will work, when we can do the same thing that you're mentioning, all these packages, yeah, I can file and get them for, I will be willing to work with Collinswood since the current administration's got a problem.
Yeah, can I answer your question? Because I know a lot of folks want to ask questions. I just wanted to respect them. So Collinswood, you know, I work with every single chief in the county and throughout the state. I know for a fact that Woodland spoke to Collinswood, Woodland spoke to Cherry Hill, Woodland spoke to Pensalkin, Haddon Township. And all those chiefs who I speak to on a weekly basis all said no. They wanted, I have no idea, they're in the workings, but they all said no. And I was the last one asked. I was the last one asked, and I didn't say no because I knew how dangerous things are currently, the current situation is scary. I know that I have the manpower and the resources to help immediately. So I didn't want to abandon your town. And I'm only here to help. I am not here, and I want to make this very clear, I'm not here to sell my police department. Trust me. You know, we, our actions speak for themselves. Nationally recognized on community policing, you know, President Obama came to Camden City because of that. And we have agencies, every agency, LAPD, NYPD, Miami PD, Atlanta, Chicago, all come to Camden to see how we operate because we've been able to do things through community policing, not the police department, through working with you, the community, to tell us what your problems are and addressing your problems. Not looking at stats on the sheet, not sitting behind desk in offices. We work directly with you. We knock on your doors. We want to meet you. What is your problem here? It's parking, it's whatever it is, non-police related, we're still going to work with you through that. And so I'm sorry, I don't know the politics of the town, nor do I want to know. I'm a police chief. I don't want to get into politics. But all I can say is that we're here to help.
I know. I'm glad for that. I just, everybody in the town wants Collinswood, not that.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Please ask some questions. There's the assemblyman who just got here. Thank you, assemblyman, for being here.
Please, please, caution.
Anybody else have questions? Oh, we have one here. We'll get back to you, I promise. Alright.
How many questions are we allowed to ask?
You ask them quickly, I can try to answer as many as you ask.
Okay, I'm going to try to combine some of these. Is there going to be dedicated police, after you fill in for that month, is there going to be dedicated police cars patrolling the town at all times? Is the force going to be like proactive or just reactive if something happens? Will you respond to all kinds of calls? Because I've been told that like in Camden, they make the people go to the station on certain calls. We don't do that here. And then I hear that you're going to have a substation somewhere.
Yes. So that's three questions?
Well, it's like four questions.
Great questions. Thank you for asking. So I was notified of this process about three or four weeks ago, that we're going to be moving forward. So I had my team come together and we started asking each other all these questions. How are we going to make this work? Because my vision here is not to take anything away from what you currently have, just add to it. That means your substation will stay here in Woodland. And I think temporarily, we're still going to use the current station as a roll call. We'll have somebody staff that during day hours. So if anyone had to come in for a copy of a police report, someone's there. It will not be a sworn police officer, because all sworn officers in my department, they need to be out on the street. You are going to see, what I had planned is to put 10 officers in Woodland. So to have, that's going to have two per shift with an extra officer floating on like a power shift, your busiest hours. And then we're going to have two sergeants as well, at all times. They will not respond to Camden if there's a call in Camden. They will not leave the borders of Woodland for any reason unless there's a lunch break. I will promise you that. We have AVS. We have a lot of technology where we monitor and manage that part. As far as being reactive, none of my officers are just sitting in police cars with their windows up, waiting for a phone call to come in. They're always doing something, and I expect them to be out of their cars when they're not on the job, so there is easier access for you to communicate with them. So more proactive, proactive in a sense where they're not going to be harassing and pulling cars over and have all these staffs that are there. Being proactive, talking, engaging, helping someone change a tire, helping someone take groceries in their house. We cut grass in Camden. We do a little bit of it all. That's proactive to me, because that's community relations, that's building trust. And when you trust that officer, when you know that officer, as you know your officers now, you're going to get to know the new ones that are going to come in as well. So that's the plan for that. Hope I answered. And there are calls in Camden that we don't respond to. Motor vehicle accidents, we respond to them. There's no injury. There's no significant damage to the vehicle. We ask them to go to the police department to get that police report filled out, because we want to keep that officer available. Because in my 22 years' experience, I was a Camden City officer when I started, transitioned into the Camden Metro Police Department. Bad people do things to distract the officers so they can go and target innocent people. So we want our officers to always be available unless it's an emergency. But they respond to everything else. I don't know what other myth is out there that we don't respond to calls. We respond to everything. We prioritize calls. If you go into the ER with a sore finger, and you've been there for four hours, and someone comes in with some chest pain, they're going right ahead of you. That's how we prioritize calls, life and death first. And you might be having a dispute with your neighbor, although that's a crisis for you. We want to make sure that these officers respond to life and death stuff first. So right now, your current policy, they don't prioritize calls. Everything is like, as I'm looking at different things, there's no structure there. And I think that's part of managing, for the officers to give them better direction to have a better outcome. So those are all things we're working through. And when I create these policies, I would love for a community member to be at the table so we can discuss it, I can explain it, and if you don't like it, we take it out and we change it. So we're going to frequently be speaking to the community. This is just not a one-and-done. We do this on a daily basis where we're getting feedback from the community so we can know real time what you like and what you don't like about the services that we're providing, because this is your police department. This is still going to be your police department. Did I answer any questions? I did. I tried. I'm sorry.
What's I got to say so far?
Okay. Ma'am, we'll get right to you next, sir. Get to the committee. Do you need the mic? Do you need it?
No, I don't need it. But since the mayor's protesting and apparently not here for this meeting, and school coming up and starting on September 5th, what's going to be the amount of police officers patrolling and also the crossing guard? How is that going to come into effect for the kids? And especially since after-school activity is when more stuff happens, with kids fighting in the street and more issues, how many patrolmen are going to be on-site and on duty actively if he keeps on protesting this? And also for, in the night, for our hotspots in town, which is the gas station in the corner, what's going to be the procedure or the amount of police that's going to be there?
So starting September 1st, which is, I believe, a Sunday, right? We are going to be adding to your current staffing levels to make it two officers per shift with two sergeants. That's going to start September 1st. Even if there's a sick out, I know Officer Fuentes is going to be retiring on the 1st as well. So that's going to just make it a little staffing, a little shorter, but we're going to supplement that. We're going to maintain officers there all time. I just spoke to the wonderful school principal that I just met and asked for her permission, because we like to have officers greet the kids on their first day of school. We have things called safe corridors in Camden City where we identify safe travel routes for the kids. We maintain officers throughout those travel routes. I like to put some SLEO ones in there. I like to mix it up, maybe some volunteers from time to time. So staffing levels are going to be, the hotspot thing, I believe we're experts in hotspots. We have maps. I have some of my intel guys here. I saw on the cover, I can't even see where he's at, but we identify those hotspots. We'll make sure to provide that to city council each month so they can share that with you guys. Everything we do, we also try to put on our website. So we're going to build out a website just for Woodland Division. So you can go in there all the time. You can see where the crimes are occurring in your town, what crimes are, what kind of crimes are occurring, how many arrests have been made. You're going to be able to see, transparency is something when I became chief almost four years ago now, but I want to make sure that we are as transparent as possible. IA, Internal Affairs Investigations, what kind of complaints, of course, now with the AG mandates, we'll post all that out there so you can always have it readily available. You can look on the website and also communicate with us as well to request the game truck, which I hope you guys saw outside or get a chance to walk through, to request cameras, because we are going to be installing cameras beginning in September. We're going to start that transition. And I already know that gas stations are hotspots, so we're going to put a camera somewhere nearby there. We make it very apparent that we're watching, and that's monitored in our command center 24/7. So we've had, unfortunately, some challenges with some of our pizzerias and gas stations in the city. So we have some great tactics that we're going to try to approach to get them, to work with them to make it better. I know this gentleman has his hand raised, and then we'll go back over there.
Alright, there you go. I'm a DJ. I can do that. Alright, first of all, I want to give a round of applause to the Woodland Police that are here and the mayor's and all the council people for all their hard work. It sounds like they were on the staff. I didn't even know I'm a homeowner here, like my neighbor. And I just wanted to say thank you to you for putting this on. And then also to let you know that I'm sure there's many of us in the room that have skills and qualities that we can bring to the table to help you in what you do. So I'd like to be the first to say that and to see what we can do to help, because if we all work together, then we can be more successful. That's basically it.
No, that's, I thank you for that statement, and I think your accent is pretty cool. I'm sorry. I thought you were an Aussie. I apologize. I don't mean nothing. But yes, like that's the part of the job that excites me, is that I'm not just sending officers out there blindly to go attack problems. Oh, there's a traffic problem here, and they're stopping you, and you're already home from a long days of work. Oh, there's a drug problem here, and they're stopping you as you're just coming out of your car because they think you're nearby. Everything is community-driven that we do, and it's based off of the information we get from you. And we, of course, some of the intel that we have as well. We work with every federal agency. I got the FBI and Speed dial too, buddy. And those partnerships benefit in several different ways, because whenever there's a forfeiture, even if it's out of our county, because we're part of those task forces, we receive funding. That game truck is all from forfeiture funds. That's all drug money that we've converted back into the community. We like to buy cameras. We like to buy giveaways. We like to get kids bikes. We like to do training sessions. we like to do training sessions, we like to do things in schools, utilizing that additional funding source that we have to do all those things and make sure we train our officers, make sure they have the top-of-the-line equipment and everything they need to do a better job. Cause officer wellness is huge for me as well. I think a better cop spiritually, mentally, and physically is a better cop that's gonna serve you. So, but thank you for that statement. We will work together to make sure Captain Coley will share her card with you. Ma'am?
They say there's a council drawn at the end of Woodland, right? There's a council building, you know, at the end of Woodland?
A council building at the end of Woodland? I don't know, is there? Oh, Public Works, they said. Is that? Oh, they're building a new Public Works site. It's Public Works.
So who's going on with the borough?
So that is a good question for council president? Council president, would you like to answer her question? What's going on in the borough, kinda?
No, like the Borough Hall.
The Borough Hall.
In the library, like...
So, I'll make sure she connects with you or somebody can have a re-talk. I just wanna keep the topic on public safety right now.
Yeah, like I don't wanna like, too many cops harassing the children, like what y'all doing, like you know what I mean? Because like, I don't think, because I was talking to my son off of work and the cop came and was like, "What you doing?" I was like, "I just, I live right here too, I'm from Burger." You know what I mean? Like I don't want him saying like, "What you doing?" Like, "I live here, what you mean?" Like we gotta get to know these cops.
Yeah, I agree. And you're gonna get to know the cops and, you know, we're gonna try to get around as much in the community as possible. We also have a truly robust system in our internal affairs. When are you displeased with the services or the way a cop stops you or talks to you or talks to your kid? That's unacceptable and we, yeah.
Got mixed by the cop, got mixed up with a cop not too long ago.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I hear you. I'm not familiar with the case, I kinda think I might have read something in the paper though. But those kind of things, I don't tolerate. Listen, I treat my officers fair, I expect them to be the most professional that they can be and if they can't, they no longer work for us. So, you know, I'm sure you won't have that problem. And if you do encounter that problem, we'll get on it immediately and correct it, okay? Next question? I'll get back to you in a sec. I wanna get to see some other hands. Oh, right there, new one. Okay, we'll get to you in a sec too, okay?
You mentioned that you were gonna be like wide open. Are you also gonna like have like reports at the council meetings? So you know like what, how many robberies, how many stuff going on, you know? So are we gonna know what the crimes are so you can be a lookout, you know? Like not lookout, but you know, like we're aware of what's going on?
One hundred percent. There's a, we have a table here at the side of the room with some information packets. So if you see a lot of police activity and you wanna call someone, we have a command center, you can call 24/7 to kinda get some information on what... We like, when there's a robbery, when there's a shooting, if there's anything, a critical incident, our team has, we call them key stakeholders in every neighborhood that we notify immediately. We notify council, we notify whoever else we have on that list so they can hear from us first on what's going on in the neighborhood before they see it on TV or social media. So we're, again, we're very transparent. Yes, we will be working on a report to provide to council on a monthly basis. So that's definitely gonna happen. Thank you, good question. Ma'am, right to you, ma'am?
So I just have a question. So we will not be going to Camden City for reports or anything? Everything will be here at Woodland, will not be?
Yes, so, and that's the purpose of me having, housing someone here so that you can go here and still get the same service you currently have. Now, after hours, we'll have officers on the street that if they're available, they can come in and print something out for you. If not, you'll be directed to the municipal building on the freeway. So just during day hours, I wanna make that promise to have that operation. There'll be people working on it 24/7, just not working in there when you're doing that. This is the current plan.
Since you mentioned that the police officers of Woodland will be combining with the Camden police, will they receive extra training, retraining, and who's, under whose command? Will they be, if violations or issues or anything like discrepancies happen, will they be let go by under you command or by the Woodland Borough or whoever it is? Who's gonna be in command of that? And it's also, who's gonna, are you gonna establish a neighborhood watch for here? And who's gonna be responsible for that in organization and all that stuff?
So I'll start with the last question first then, cause it's the one I remember the most right now. Is, yes, neighborhood watches, we have different names for things. We have an app that you can put on your phone, totally anonymous, that you can text our command center. And you see issues that are not emergent, you can call up there or send this text, this anonymous text, if you just wanna remain anonymous. There's multiple ways where you're gonna be able to communicate with us, you're gonna have our numbers as well. So once we come in October 1st, I normally in public meetings share my cell number. I'd like to do that quite yet, a little teaser, right? The officers, September 1st, we're gonna start supervising them. On the second week of September, our internal affairs is gonna have full command of Woodland Police Department under the shared services that we have going. So we have already started training the Woodland officers that are currently working. We also, they showed interest to be hired, so they've applied. And we're going through that process, the hiring process now. So October 1st, they'll be fully under the Camden County Police Department, under the Woodland Division, with addition of some officers. So, yes, starting September 1st, we will be the ones supervising and managing all those police units.
That includes any violations in their cars or anything?
Yes, so that's, we have our wonderful lead attorney here. I will defer to her so you can connect with her after the meeting. But yes, what we normally do, currently, we have a shared service agreement we've had in township where we do all of their internal affairs. We, you know, document all the findings and the facts and then we forward it to whoever's lead under the township to make the final decision. That's only until we have full control. After that, I will be running all this.
That includes their training and everything like that?
Training, everything, so...
Requirements?
Yes, so that's why we started that already. I believe we trained four officers this past week. Fully trained, eight-hour bossing instructions, wanna make sure that everything is currently up to date so that we're not supervising officers that don't have that training. So many of them had some training, we just wanna make sure they have all the training that we documented it. No offense to anyone else, but we just, you know, as a precaution, it's the smart thing to do when you're gonna take responsibility.
So I do have another budget-related question that's probably better directed to the council. But first, I was very disturbed when I heard this woman's question regarding her child being maced. So I'll just ask you straight up, are you going to hire the police officer that maced a child?
I believe that officer was indicted? And I think there's some pending litigations, I can get into details. All of this I read on the newspaper, I didn't read any documents on that. Yeah, that officer, I believe, has got some problems, so, yeah, that's... There's a gentleman back there.
Yes, with process being so important, I'd just like to point out that I don't recall seeing any publications in the newspaper regarding this meeting.
There were, right?
Were there? Which papers? Which newspapers? I'm not talking about the mailers, I'm talking about newspapers. This is a meeting where, this is a meeting where public matters are being discussed. Members of our local government are here, they're addressing us, they are answering some questions to some of these cases. So, yes, it needed to be noticed. No, no, that doesn't count.
Sir.
That's a wonderful bonus. But the law states there needs to be two publications in very, two very specific newspapers. And I don't recall seeing them. That's all I'm saying.
So sir, I appreciate your question, I'm sure we can sidebar on that, but I wanna get to some folks that have some more public safety questions, cause that's what I'm here for.
That's fantastic, I don't mean to interrupt that, I'm just pointing out on the record that this was missed.
Thank you. So any other questions before we get, I'll get back to you, anyone else that hasn't asked?
Thank you. My question is around the issue of training. And I wanna know how many hours of training are police officers receiving to help them, one, de-escalate conflict, one? And two, to deal with their innate gender and racial bias? Because that's a real problem with police officers.
Absolutely. Great question, Pastor. Thank you for asking that. I can tell you that the AG sends a set of requirements annually, firearms qualifications, bias training, I-CAT training, which is a way to de-escalate better communication skills. There's a bunch of training that, requirements that comes from the AG's office that have to be met annually. We set the bar higher. We train our officers every day. So every day, we have officers in this room that we've made like a virtual room where it's like you're in a big arcade game and it's because we know the younger generation. And I'm kind of in the border of younger and older, so I'm not saying anything bad about the younger generation. But everything is through a phone, through texts, through social media. Communication is not the same as it used to be. So we wanna make sure our officers know that their strongest tool is their words. Not their gun, their mace, and their baton. So we put them through some stressful exercises and make them react appropriately by using their words. If they get a little too aggressive, through their voice, if their blood pressure, we do monitor their heart rate, that gets a little too elevated, the situation goes south and then we stop it and start it again and teach them different ways. When our officers use force, cause sometimes that's the only part of the job where we have to use force, although lawful, awful, we still bring those officers in, although per policy, they did nothing wrong. We still bring them in so the next time they encounter that same situation, there's a better outcome. We want officers to slow things down, use time as a tactic so you can get the desired outcome, and that's to help people. We get a lot of calls on 40 nowadays for folks suffering from mental illness. So that is a huge thing and now we have social workers embedded in our police department to respond to some of these calls with us. Because these officers get called to a lot of different jobs and we're not professionals and everything, we try to be. We try to help in every way, but I know a mother does not call the cops to come and help and they end up killing the kid. And we've seen that happen around the country. So training is a daily, ongoing daily basis and monitored constantly. If we see officers use a certain amount of forces, use of forces during a certain period, we put them on monitoring, although all the use of forces were justified, to make sure they get extra training. But that's on the constant, and I, listen, all these things I mentioned about our police department, the doors are open anytime anyone wants to come and do a walkthrough and see the technology and see the way we train. Because I know I had some visitors come through and it's different when you see it than me sitting up here trying to explain it because...
I just wanted to say that there are some, that there's some police around the country who specialize in working with police departments, school districts, to help the leadership identify any gender and racial bias.
Yes.
And I would be willing to give you a list of those persons because what you said is good, but I'm almost sure that is not getting at the root of my maleness, which makes me prejudiced against women because I'm so surprised with your context, no African white against the black over there.
Right.
Right? And that's why we have the shootings. So there are some people around the country who do this every day, who'd be willing to come in and work with you and your department to help minimize that.
Now, listen, we're always open to best practices, right? None of these ideas are our ideas, we stole them from different places and just made it ours in our own way, on a special way. What I can do, what I can tell you is that our officers don't, they see people as people. You know what? Our Camden City officers, I'm referring to, not all officers. And it's because they know them. When I say where officers' first assignment when they're out of the police academy is to knock on doors and meet the people, meet the people in the community they're patrolling, they know them on a first-name basis so they don't see you as a person of color or gender or anything else. They know you as your first name and you know them as the same, so they get to know you, that's how that relationship starts. So when there's a call there, when there's an issue there, these people are helping us. These homicides and shootings and other violent crime attacks, they're being solved not because we have great detectives, but we do. No offense to San Antonio, who runs, but it's because of the relationships. The community is helping make their community better. We often put everything on police, but we need the community to be involved with us to fix the problems here. And there's some neighborhoods in Camden that no longer need police. It polices itself because we went in there to help fix it and now the folks feel in charge and they don't let these bad things come. They maintain lighting and cutting grass and all these other elements that attract the negative. These folks, we encourage them through these partnerships. But to answer your question, Pastor, I am more than willing to take the list from you and meet these people and I'm sure I probably have in some form or another throughout the country. So, thank you, appreciate that.
I have a question. You mentioned the kids from school and everything else, okay? We can't blame the kids for the trouble that's happening out there. I wanna know is, if you see a kid that's in trouble doing stuff, what's your precision, how to help this kid, right? Put him back and change him. I know it's hard to change any kids, okay? I worked with kids for fifteen years, diapers and family court, okay? It's not that they get in trouble here, but because of the peers. That's not what, they are scared. I've worked with them, everything, and they don't have the help they need.
Thank you so much.
The room, you know, the rooms you go to.
I'm gonna answer your question, okay? We have a few more folks that still wanna ask questions. So I have a specialist in the room when it comes to juvenile-related matters. We don't like calling them juvenile, they're having trouble inside for saying, we call them our youth, our children. They, you know, we have a lot of those challenges in Camden City. And we know, you know, a lot of their problems started at home. During COVID, a lot of kids never returned back to school. There's a lot of, listen, I come from a broken home in the projects, East Camden. Single mother, all welfare, all the challenge you can think of, all the negativity surrounding you, all the easy ways to make money go down the wrong direction. I just chose not to go down that direction. So I speak from experience that it's very easy to do the wrong thing when you don't have the parenting or the supervision at home. So there are programming, and I don't know if you wanna step up for a sec, Viv, and I'm gonna throw you out there. But we do this on a daily basis. You can answer from there, Viv.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we, I, I'm Captain Vivian Coley. I am the commander of Community Outreach and also the chief's executive officer. I'm also a foster parent and a mother of three. We come from a very soft place when we're dealing with youth. We, the Community Outreach Unit, usually have about a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids weekly where we provide a safe space for them. We understand that there are so many challenges, peer-related matters, things like that that occur. We make ourselves available for our kids. We also have a new program through Hope Works where if you're not in school, they would help you get your GED. They'll put you right, on the right track, offer a stipend, offer housing. We have those kinds of programs. Thankful, we're so thankful for all of these folks that are in the room that give us that tool to work with, with our youth. So it's not mace, it's not running down the kids, trying to arrest them. We make ourselves available and provide a safe space for them.
Thank you, Viv.
You're welcome, sir.
Question back, do you need a mic from him?
No, I'm good. Just a couple of things about process roster and IA. Can you please confirm the current rank and names of the existing Woodland police force who are currently active duty, working right now?
Yeah, is, do you have that information with you? I don't wanna mess anyone's names up, but I know we have the acting sergeant Luis Ruiz, Officer Rodriguez, Officer Fuentes, Melvin Fuentes, who's a Class II. Officer Blunt, and that's it, right? They have three recruits in the police? One on FMLA, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, no, sorry. One more military, thank you for your service, but he made it here tonight. So that's what the current roster is.
Okay, and so the, so I got acting sergeant Luis Ruiz and then what are the ranks of the other officers?
So, three of them, three...
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, I just wanna confirm. Then the next question is, you said IA, you take over on the second day?
Second week.
Second week, excuse me. So does that mean that will be when or if? So does that mean that will be when or if there is any backlog of stuff that'll be addressed? If there's anything existing and do you know if any of the folks working now have any discipline issues?
So we, we did get some of the records from the internal fair professional standards of the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor's office is currently managing the supervision and discipline for the officers of Woodland through their office. And they shared those folders of the officers that signed off that applied for us. So we don't have everyone's folder yet, but the ones that did apply, we do have those records.
Thank you.
Sir.
Hi, I'm Elsa. I don't have a direct question, I just have two comments. I've lived in Woodland for twenty-four years and I just want to welcome Camden County Police. I've actually worked with a lot of your officers because I work in the city of Camden and I know most of them by first name. So I've had the pleasure. I just want to set the tone that the temperament, the resonance in this room is not because we don't welcome the police force, it's because we had no idea. Unfortunately, the current government we have here is not very transparent and some of us did not know this was happening until we turned on the six o'clock news when you held a press conference here. So please understand, it's not that people don't want the Camden County Police here, it's just because we work blind inside it. My second part goes back to the budget because as a homeowner, I pay almost seven thousand dollars a year already in property taxes. So thinking about the cost of additional police, which I want my house to be safe and my family, but last week I think it was proposed for shared services for Camden City Fire Department as well. And we haven't had a fire department in the sixteen years I've owned my house. So I'd like to push on Camden County officials to figure out a plan for Woodland residents. We're not going to be able to afford to live here. And I'd like you to do a little deeper dive on the municipal government here to see what we can do to get this town back on track. That's all.
No, thank you for your comment and I was, I was, when I was a Camden City officer, maybe I should have led with this from my introduction. And I was laid off twice, right? And we were told the second time during, I was laid off for eleven months, the first time almost lost everything, it was terrible. But anyway, the, the second time I was laid off, I was told that I wasn't, there was not going to be another police department to come back to. And it was very difficult at the time to accept that because the pride we had in our agency, this is Camden City, our Camden City Patch, Camden City Kid, very, very difficult for us to accept. The community, they were extremely angered by it because there was, there was transparency, but you know, sometimes people don't show up to things. We were trying to get lots of support from the community to stop this, we laid our boots down to the curb. Good pair of boots that I just listed away. But in hindsight, and I understand that the frustration, just the unknown is a scary thing. But that's why I wanted to hold, host this and if you want to meet again next week, we will. If you want to meet once a week, we will. As many times as we have to, e- even if it's not here, it's in front of your house, wherever you want, the park. We will, because I want to assure you guys that we're coming to help and add things and not break the bank as well. That, that's why I'm in a second, I'm going to pass the mic off to our Assemblyman who's here that can talk about some of the financial support we can get from the state authorities, transition. I did a lot of research on my own. I'm running a police department in Camden City and trust me, every minute of my day is accounted for. But I took time off during the weekend and nights to talk to other chiefs that have gone through these type of mergers and helping take over other, other agencies and hiring those officers and being transparent and getting funding. I tried it every single way so it doesn't hurt you, that this only benefits you and your community. So that's what I, what I'm coming. And if I may, Assemblyman, you want to come up and say a few words and talk?
Question, question. Good evening. I'm the former Councilman Clyde Cook. I was a councilman here in the borough of Woodland, served one term. Chief Rodriguez, my hat goes out to you and to members of the Camden County Police Department. Y'all guys are key coordinators in Camden, I appreciate y'all. My worries, this is now the second time that we're dealing with the dismantling of a police department here in Woodland. And the history of why we're dealing with it is because politics get involved. My prayer is that y'all guys don't have to deal with the political system that has us where we are today. When it all boils down to it, we're talking about the mishandling of funds and you know, certain individuals within the governing body that has taken those funds and have benefited and have created a salary, a pension for themselves and now they're running off to the sunset. And here we are today with the dismantling of a police department because of their illegitiments as far as how they handle the business of the borough. Now, members of council are also a part of that, this is a handpicked system. So now here we are standing here and forgive me, last week I was in the hospital. I, I did not expect to come here today to have this conversation, but I felt it was only right because Woodland residents reached out to me and said, Cook, are you going to come? And I'm, I'm just concerned, you know, my question will be, how do y'all prevent the politics from getting involved with your department? In which we had a former mayor that had control over what was going on with Collinswood. And because he couldn't have his way, and thank you, keep showing it sir, keep showing it. He couldn't have his way with that department. He caused that department to have his hardship and it went its way. And here we are now with the situation where Camden's coming in and we're looking at the same thing. Fuentes, I love the fact that you're putting that camera on me. Witness the man that has us where we are. So the question is, the question is, you also have personnel that was hired. We had a situation where a cop was, you know, came from the county, was hired by Woodland that pepper sprayed, you know, teenagers that were sitting on the porch. You have a situation where myself and my family, courtesy of a certain individual who sent somebody to my house to assault my family, who's also the training officer for these individuals that have us where we are. You have an individual that also was on, excuse me, a civilian that is now the public safety director, the director over the public safety of, of, you know, Woodland, that's now riding off the sunset, have a dispute between him and another individual of the government, former governing body, who is pretty much claimed to be the administrator that's leaving with an eighty thousand dollar salary and pension now. So now that the town is drained of all its resources and assets, can't afford the police department. I remember when we had, I remember what I'm, what I'm basically saying, what, excuse me. No, it needs to be said. Because at the end, everything is being shuffled underneath and I'm worried about your department and the direction that we're going in. For the safety of your department. So that y'all guys don't fall on the same hardship that Collinswood had to deal with when it came to the politics and being controlled. I don't want to see y'all guys being controlled by the governing body, but being able to police Woodland and give Woodland what Woodland deserves to have.
Amen.
So that's important to me.
Thank you, thank you so much for your comments and your concerns. I, I know the transition from Camden City to Camden Metro, we experienced a little bit of that change. Fortunate for me, I get to work with great people every single day. Holly Cass is here, she's somebody I talk to almost on a daily basis, Deputy County Administrator, County Council, who I bother all the time even when she's on vacation, and our commissioners. I tell you Commissioner McDonald is phenomenal. These people care about public safety, not only in Camden City, but throughout the county. I believe what happens in Woodland, what happens in Collinswood affects us all. So borders don't matter to me, I try to help out wherever I can. And we work in partnership with city council, we work in partnership with the mayor's office. I meet with him on a monthly basis. We have our command staff present during council meetings. But I make the decisions for the police department, no one else.
How does Camden feel about the merger in itself? How do they feel?
So, so I've spoken to several people and I wanted to make sure that they understood that this is taking zero resources away from Camden City. Our mission there has not changed and will not change one bit. We're just looking to supplement Woodland and help grow the police department and provide public safety here.
Now, the current officers that you are looking to bring on from Woodland into Camden, are y'all guys going through the process as far as the psychological background, which was swept underneath the rug from when the former?
Yes, so, 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 sir, please.
No, my reason behind it.
So I'm going to answer this question and I want to take, no, I'm going to answer this question and I want to get to a couple more people because you're asking some great questions, some good diggers there. They will go through a full background, psychological, physical evaluation, all of it as a new hire for us because we, and then we're going to get them trained again, a second time, to make sure that all their qualifications, firearms, TASER qualification, they understand how to operate our body cams and our policy procedures for that. Everything that, that our officers currently receive, they're going to receive immediately.
My only reason for asking that question is because a lot of stuff falls under the civil service when it comes to taking tests and that and so on. And there's a lot of people as far as within this, you know, Camden County, excuse me, Woodland Police Department that were just given positions overnight. You're talking about in the rest of the year, corporal down to detective.
I'm not aware of any of that.
Without being properly.
I'm not aware of, I don't want anyone to get angry here, I want, I want to hear the good and the bad of what I see.
How do you defend that from taking place?
So that's my question. I can tell you, things like that, they don't occur where we are, we follow all the rules and more, we add more rules. I'm going to take three more questions. Mr. Cook, thank you and I keep you in my prayers man for swift recovery and everything. So I, I wanted to go to her first, okay? So, so our, so we do have members from our county communications here, public safety folks that you can speak to about that, but we're currently in the process of merging our CAD system, our records system as well and, and our, so they'll be dispatched, we have an entire section at the county communications that are designated for Camden City. So those calls are going to start being received through them and dispatched through them. So you can still call nine one one and you're still, nothing's going to change on that at all. I'm hoping response times get better because you're going to have more cops. There, there, yes, there, there's, there's a lot of information we can share with you that we have at our current headquarters, but we will have someone there Monday through Friday during day work hours, day hours to help you with any issue you have. And if they, if they have to call an officer off the street to help you, they, they'll do that as well. Two more questions.
I went online to find the next Camden County Town Hall, which I found for this evening, thinking it was going to be open to some other topics as well. Is there an opportunity?
So this, yeah, this town hall, yeah, this town hall was all about me, right? It was all about the police department. This is, this is really a change for you guys all to hear from me and that's why I was so grateful that everyone showed up tonight because I'm going to try to answer as best as I can, but, but we do have representatives from the county here that can talk to you. But we do have representatives here that can chat with you after the meeting, okay? Ma'am? Ma'am?
Hi, I'm. Hi, my name is Dustin Proctor, I have a question. I understand that in Camden you have, you know, I see the gaming truck outside, you know, for all the children. And I know that we have the, the whatever, the national night out. But like, would you be, I mentor children, my boss calls me the behavioral kid whisperer. You know, I do wonders with behavioral kids. And I'm just wondering if there's any way, you know, in Woodland, like, we can get a PAL going. I know that Thornton used to have, they used to have a PAL and we would work with kids, you know, my sons and we were, you know, under them and they did an amazing job, you know, with my sons. And I just want to know if they'll be at some point in time, they'll be able to correlate and come together and maybe keep our kids off the streets and maybe not even in the gaming truck. But something worthwhile with them.
One, one hundred percent, that's, that's what we're all about. My focus as the chief in Camden City is focusing on our community jewels, which are our children and our seniors. So trust me, that's going to be my same focus here, working with our kids who are going to be the future of us, right? And making sure that they're safe and that we can provide safe spaces for them. And people like you that we lean on heavily to come and help us mentor and find other resources to provide them that they currently lack. We've, we've helped families, I'm not here to brag or sell, but again, I just, we, we've had families that don't have food, that don't have furniture and we've taken, delivered sofas and beds and Pampers and all these kind of resources, connected them to different resources, try to provide them job training, the parents after school to help kids, help mentor the kids and get them reading to some tutoring program. We've been to the schools, we go to the schools, many schools and read with the kids to build those relationships. And we've seen, this is what's been reported back to me, that those kids that we've interacted with and read with, their reading levels have increased since we've started that with them. And in the beginning, some of the parents weren't happy that they were with the police in the schools, but that changed over time and whenever we don't show up unfortunately, kids are very upset and they, they, we hear a lot from them. So yes, I will make sure Captain Coley shares her card with you because these are definitely programs, we want to, we want to introduce new programs here in Woodland. Yes. Okay. Gamechangers.org y'all.
Mayor Fuentes and I, I'm a mother of eight. And as my son says, no one is dead in jail or on drugs, but mom, you might know a little something.
So, yes. So we create, we created this, this initiative called the Village Initiative. In Camden, the Village Initiative is just really all of us coming together to raise our children. And you know, all these kids need all of our help, not just the police department or the parent, all of us. So we're going to be connected with you. One more question and then we're going to hit the room. Sir?
So, the problem of having, of not being able to hire enough police officers to build a staff that you were looking for in Woodland has been obviously going on for a while. And I hear that you may have reached out to Woodland, half a dozen different local municipalities to try to get a shared services agreement before you went to Camden County, if I heard that correctly. And you made a very good point about how police are asked to do a lot of things that are not necessarily things that they're supposed to be doing. So was there any discussion about reducing the funding that was being allocated for police since you couldn't hire them anyway? And instead putting it towards social services or other things that might actually help prevent crime in the first place? Rather than just continuing to throw money at more police?
Well, we couldn't blatantly not hire officers for definitely to help the town save and have threats.
I'm sorry, could you speak up please?
I'm sorry, I have not a very loud speech. But we couldn't just blatantly not hire, try to hire police officers here in town for the town's safety, as much as I would love to say that we could, you know, get extra money to allocate for social services funding because trust me, I do believe in that wholeheartedly. My children were brought up to tutor and mentor other children. But that wasn't a feasible option for us. You know, the biggest, the biggest part was just to try and ensure the safety of the residents to keep a functioning police department. When you get involved with civil service, and unfortunately this town is a civil service town, that's what kind of hindered us. A lot of folks, when they go from one civil service police department to another, you can't immediately maintain them as a full-time officer. So they become slayos. Well, then they get frustrated and they end up leaving because they don't want to wait and stay a part-time officer because that's not what they signed up for. So that's what made it a little, a lot harder for us to keep maintaining full-time officers. So once it became to the critical point, that's when we sought out shared services with other townships and that's what finally led into doing with Camden County Metro. As much as we would have liked to have allocated monies elsewhere, you just, you cannot put people's safety in jeopardy that way unfortunately. It's just not feasible.
So to clarify, the only means of keeping the town safe that was considered was more police officers? Or no other safety model?
She said yes. So thank you all, I really appreciate your questions, great questions. You've been a great audience, I like the, the good and the bad and the ugly, I like to get a little bit of it all because that's what makes us better. I'm not going anywhere, nor are any of my people, I'm just going to end this portion with me. So feel free to come and chat or chat with some of my folks here as well and we'll be able to answer any questions we have. But I am going to pass the mic off, be sharp, to the Assemblyman who is a, a great friend, a representative of yours in this town as well. And he is always working hard to make change to benefit the community. I know we work personally on certain walls and have the ability to do some great things together. So here with further, without further ado.
Good evening, everyone. So I want to look at, I want to address two things. First, money. As was mentioned earlier, one of the problems we have in the state of New Jersey is that our taxes are way too high. The average tax, real estate taxes in the state are, it was nine thousand dollars two years ago. You're, I understand you're paying seven thousand, I guess a lot of you are in that area paying that amount of money. So I'll address that first. My understanding, and I'm here with the commissioners and the. My understanding, and, um, I'm here with the Commissioners and the Administration, my understanding is that we will not see an increase in taxes for at least the next year. We have that planned out right now. Um, had there been more time to prepare for this, we probably could extend that horizon. Um, and we will do everything we can at the state level to make sure that there's grants available to make sure we can cover the cost of the police and the fire department. The object is to make sure that you are safe. So, I just want to put that out there for everyone to, so you know. Your taxes, well, I won't say read my lips, I will say your taxes will not go up in the next year, period, in the conversation, and we are working to make sure they do not go up because of police and fire after that. And we will try and make sure we bring funds to the municipality to keep your taxes where they are. Um, while at the state level, we work to reduce your taxes with programs like the ANCHOR Program. All of you know about the ANCHOR Program, right? Okay, good, so that's what we're doing at the state level to try and reduce your taxes. We also have something called Senior Freeze, and we're trying to put together another program for seniors to reduce your taxes, so you can, Senior Stay, I think it's called, so you can stay in New Jersey as opposed to moving out of New Jersey. So I just wanted to do, address the money issue first. Second issue, I too, this is quality of life issue. I too grew up in Maguire Gardens, and I too went to Camden Schools, and I too created a community organization in my neighborhood of Parkside, where I still live. And I'll tell you, I, I can witness that this police department has made an amazing change to my neighborhood. When they switched over from the Camden City Police Department to the Camden County Police Department, there were, there was one instance where there were two police cars on duty from eleven to seven on a Friday night, Saturday night, two police cars for the entire city. After they switched over, we have police on the street all the time. You would, this young lady, lady right here is starting a nonprofit. They work with all of our nonprofits. I'm a part of a group called Parkside Business and Community in Partnership. We have a community meeting every two months, there's always a police officer present. If there's a request, the chief will be there, or the captain will be there. I call Captain Coley all the time. I also worked for the Housing Authority in Camden for a while, and I was always in touch with Captain Coley, because there was always a problem. So, these guys are there, they're not just blowing smoke, they are there all the time. And when he says that they are on the street, walking and talking to people, he's not joking. He knows our block captains, we have a block captains' network in, in Parkside. The officer assigned to Parkside knows all of our block captains by name, by name. And our block captains have her number, they have his number, they have her number. I don't know if they have your number, but he's in administration. But, I'm telling you, I'm, I, I am not joking, and I'll just give you one example of what happened. My cousin was an elderly, still is, an elderly gentleman, he had a stroke, and he was crippled. He couldn't get up and down the steps, and he had an episode, and he was stuck in an upstairs apartment. Don't you know, a police officer, they called the police, police officer climbed up, they, the fire department came with a ladder, the police officer climbed into the window on the second floor and carried my cousin out of this apartment. Then they got him into a residence where he could stay. I think it was, I forget exactly where it was, but I, I think it was one of, I think it was the nursing home in North Camden. So, they saved his life, and there's other stories like that, that have happened over the past ten years. So as a resident, and again, I still live there, and they're currently working to get rid of some drug dealers in my neighborhood, as a matter of fact. So, they are with you, and this is no joke, they will be with you. You will know them, you will see them, they will be walking your streets, they will be talking to you on your porches. That's what they do in my neighborhood up to this day. So, that's all I've got to say. Well, any questions about anything I've said? Yes, ma'am? Right, well, hmm. Yeah, and I, I would, that's, that is a very complicated, that's a very complicated question and a very complicated solution, that had to do with contracts and all kinds of other stuff. So yes, please, speak to the Commissioner about that. He was around when we did it, and he was kind of the architect, I believe, financially, so he can answer your questions. But yeah, what, what it boils down to is we had to get rid of the old police department because of the structure. And they structured a new police department in which more police were actually on the street. We had, I'm sorry, I got to say this, we had literally police officers in headquarters filing, doing filing, nine to five, and get, getting paid shift def, deferential. So they're getting paid more money to be in headquarters filing, rather than being on the street. All of that changed when these guys took over. And that's the reason why they can, they have people that are out there working with you. They changed the entire mindset of the police force. And now, and I just got to say this, this is a model, not just for the state, it's a model for the country. We have people coming from overseas to see what these guys do. It's no joke, these guys are the bomb. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, so now you're saying we have two cops in this here area, for right now?
So this is a patrol question, chief?
So current staffing levels allow you to have, there's, there's some days where you have one cop.
Yeah, we have one now.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's days that you have the part timers that are only supposed to be allowed by law to work twenty hours a week, or working sixty to cover the gaps. The officers are working their tails off to make sure that there's always someone here, and they're starting to get burnt out as well.
Yeah, I know, because you know, my, my question, the reason I said that, so now that they know we don't have Woodland cop no more, okay, here's just a couple cops in the area, so you've got all the drug deals coming from different areas coming to here.
So when I was at, uh, at the other church for the press conference, I think that's one word I used, was scary. I didn't want to get into details in front of the cameras, but it is scary, because if the bad people find out, the, uh, that you don't have the appropriate coverage, you guys are all targets.
They know where we're at.
Right, but, so, so we're, we're, we've already been in communication with the officers, um, our supervisors, our command centers, so if there's any significant gaps or concerns, you know, we're, we're here to assist. So, but starting on Sunday, you'll see more of us here. And that comes with our full investigative unit, um, and all of our detectives, and you're going to see different folks. So thank you all, I'm not going anywhere, please, uh, come up and just chat some more, or chat some from our folks, and I'll give you all our input.